We are in the Mayor Bill Covina Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, forty-five Gordon Road, Brockton, Mass., O two three oh one. This is a public hearing. And visitors' hearing, hearing of visitors is also into the, into the agenda. Notice has been posted at City Hall and on our website. All are welcome to attend. Some more board members are here present and some are on Zoom. This is a regular session of the Board of Directors. I will do a roll call for forum. Timothy J. Sullivan Chair, here. Vice Chair Brutus Pettifat is not here, he's sick and in the hospital. Member Janet R. Trask.
Here.
Treasurer Cal Roberts.
Here.
Assistant Treasurer Taylor Harris.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
This is the Governor's memo on the COVID- nineteen. Due to the ongoing COVID- nineteen pandemic and state of emergency, on March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. For someone to the order, public parties are temporarily relieved from the open meeting laws requirements that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public. The longest measures are taken to ensure public access due deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That was extended to April first, twenty twenty-one, extended again April first, twenty twenty-two, extended again to July first, twenty twenty-two, extended again till July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, extended again to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three by Governor Charlie Baker, and extended again to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five by Governor Haley. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in a regular session on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at two P M. In the Mayor Bill Covina Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, forty-five Gordon Road, first floor, Brockton, Mass., O two three oh one. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if the technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance reporting with. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App in the Niti App Store or at www.zoom.u s at two P M. on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Click on and join a meeting and enter meeting ID number eight three eight one one six eight two three four zero, passcode three nine six seven six six, or use the link, H T T P double dot double slash zoom.us slash I slash eight three eight one one six eight two three four oh. You may also join by calling the conference line at one six four six five five eight eight six five six at two P M. on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and enter the meeting ID eight three eight one one six eight two three four zero, passcode three nine six seven six six, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time and manner of other comment during this meeting. If we could all rise and begin. And remove your hats and silence yourself for the fudge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which is founded on the Constitution of the Constitution of the Constitution of the Item one, roll call.
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and the special meeting of October second, twenty twenty-four, item A in your package.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board have had the opportunity to review the minutes. I found them to be in order, and I would recommend that they be approved as written.
We need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Cal Beach, Taylor.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and the special meeting of October second, twenty twenty-four, as written. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. I am three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before this board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with their name, address, and contact number before the start of the meeting. Each visitor would be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any issues under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to fifteen minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing your three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Is there any hearing of visiting?
No one, no one has signed in here, Mr. Chairman. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Hearing none, move to item four, correspondence.
You have two pieces of correspondence. One is a letter from HUD regarding our designated housing plan. The designated housing plan is a very important part of our elderly, federal elderly disabled program. It allows us to limit the number of younger disabled people who go into the buildings to twenty-five percent, with seventy-five percent of the non specially designed units going to elders. That's important because if we did not have the plan, we would never tenant another elder. This plan was worked on by Mrs. Campbell, Mr. Plouffe, and Ms. Rose. It was well put together. It was sent into HUD and they send it to Fair Housing. Now, I say that. I want to make sure, we do many, many other things to address the needs of the younger disabled. So we have to put those in that plan also, but it's very good news that it was approved, and I want to thank the people who worked on it to make sure it was, because it would be, and Fair Housing understands too, if we put one hundred percent disabled people into our buildings, that that would be an undue grouping of people based upon that disability. The second item that was put into your your packet is a notice that on Monday, October twenty-eighth, that we will be starting our after-school with Schools on Wheels, our after-school mentoring program over Hillside Village. And so we're very excited about that. We hope to really start off with a bang and get the activity for the after-school kids going. It's a great organization and we have a lot of hopes for that.
What are the ages for that?
Very good question, Mike. The man who would know that, who's been working on it, Dennis Sheedy, is in Fall River today. Training, you know, Mr. Plouffe?
I do not know.
I think the usual ages are somewhere between, you know, first grade and twelve, thirteen years old. We can do more, Commissioner Trask, but usually after thirteen, they don't want to come in.
Yeah.
And we've been trying to, you know, do different things to do that. A Y after-school program has done things that have been somewhat successful.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope, that should still stay open.
And there's no action on the hearing of other, on the correspondence. Item five, approval of the bill for the regular meeting of October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and sympathy in the package. Mr. Roberts.
Yes, I have reviewed the bills and found everything in order.
Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Is that second by you, Taylor?
Yes.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the bills, the regular meeting of October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, approval of amendment to the Brockton Housing Authority, Section Eight Administrative Plan, Exhibit C in your package.
Before I ask Ms. Campbell to speak on this, I just want to let the board know, you'll see next month, there'll be a vote coming to you. HUD is changing regulations faster than we can keep up with. And every time they change a regulation, we have to make sure that our administrative plans and our policies that you adopt are compliant with that. This has something to do with that, probably, if you're talking about. This is Campbell speaking.
So this change that we did is actually a small change. Mass Narrow updated the website that they use, which is centralized waitlist from goal section eight to affordablehousing.com. So that's pretty much where I went in the admin plan to edit and then to make sure that we're using the right website. Wow. For this channel, yeah.
But it is, so this is a public facing document that says this is how we operate. And if it says we operate one way, and we do it a different way. It's not, yeah.
We need a motion and a second, item six.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to amend the Brockton Housing Authority, Section Eight Administrative Plan, Chapter Four, Paragraph four dash one, be as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item seven, approval of twenty twenty-five HUD payments standards, Exhibit D in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Plouffe to speak on this, please?
Right on, Mrs. Campbell. Just rattles them a little bit. So every year HUD publishes fair market rents. They do a survey around the country and every area, and they use the census to determine fair market rents. And here in Brockton, because of our MTW status, we apply to HUD and were granted the ability to use small area fair market rents. So instead of having a fair market rent for our whole metropolitan area, we can pick by each zip code in our metropolitan area. So O two three oh one has a different fair market rent than O two three oh two. So then the staff down at Section Eight goes through all of it and uses that affordablehousing.com, the old Go Section Eight, and determines fair market rents of rent reasonable, reasonable rents for the area, and then makes a recommendation to the board, which is here in our waiver from HUD on the MTW. We can go between eighty percent of the small area of LA to one hundred and fifty percent. And I, going through it, I saw the highest one was a hundred and twenty-four percent for one of the four bedrooms in Rainham. And the lowest, we were down to eighty-seven percent at a studio in Havens. So we're trying to capture what's really out there in the market and make it fair for our people to be able to, our participants, to be able to find a good apartment, but that we're not driving the market, that we're not setting the rents at such a high rate, high amount that we're driving. So we'd recommend that the board adopt one of these payment standards as listed, at least one of these down.
Just one question.
Sure.
Out of all the, what do you pick? A town that you want to?
So, so these towns that are in here are in the Brockton Metropolitan Statistical Area set by HUD. So when they say, if we were discounting, in the old days, we used to just use a fair market rent for this whole area, and the Brockton rents would be dragged down by the COV rents. And so the whole, it was like an average of all of them. And by doing this and just doing each zip code separately, we can say, okay, if COV is lower and Brockton's higher, it's not going to drag the Brockton rents down. So our people don't have to live on Warren Ave or up behind the old Zares, that they can live in a nicer apartment that has amenities.
We need a motion and a second, item seven.
So moved.
Give it to you in a second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion to approve the HUD payment standards as presented, based on HUD recently published small area fair market rent affected January one, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item eight, award of contract on-call roofing repairs and maintenance services, Exhibit E in your package.
If we could ask Mr. Christopher to speak on this, please?
This contract is for the on-call roofing repairs and maintenance services. On September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Brockton Housing Authority advertised a qualified roofing contractor for work that cannot be performed by current staff. This work was to be awarded to two responsive and responsible bidders that met the qualifications set in the bid package. This is a three-year contract not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars of duration of the contract. On October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, submission deadline, we received two bids, as reflected in the tail sheet. The low and only responsive bidders were Gibson Roofing, three hundred, three sixty-nine Winter Street, Hanover, Mass., and Greenwood Industries, six forty Lincoln Street, Worcester, Mass. Bidders were advertised in central register, Conbuys, the BHA website, and the Enterprise. Six companies received bid packets, and two bids were submitted, Gibson Roofing and Greenwood Industries. As I recommend, a motion be made to award the contract in the amount not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars to Gibson Roofing and Greenwood Industries. One question finished. How come they don't go with one? The little bit. We advertise it too.
I can answer that. So we do it with electricians and we do it with plumbers also, because oftentimes we call them and they're not available. These are usually emergency calls. So there's been a big storm. We got a hole in the roof. We call someone, and if they're not available, we're stuck. So we try to get two or three vendors.
We need a motion and a second. Item eight.
So moved.
Second.
Cal Beach, Janet. A motion has been made by Commissioner Tyler Harris, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to award a three-year contract in the amount not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars to Gibson Roofing of Hanover, Mass. and Greenwood Industries of Worcester, Mass. for on-call roofing repairs and maintenance. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item nine, approval of change order number one, comprehensive roof replacement, Bel Air Heights, Project twenty-four dash two.
So Mr. Barry is in Texas. He has a niece who's graduating from medical school, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. So he has left this to us here at Brockton. This is the roofing job we're doing at Bel Air. When they were doing the roofing job, they found termite damage to one of the buildings. Barely significant damage. It was not part of the roofing job, so Mr. Christopher went out and got a bid, and it was about sixty-six thousand dollars. At that time, we asked Mr. Barry to ask, since they're on-site, would they be willing to give us a bid on it? And they did. And they came in at forty-seven thousand dollars, almost twenty thousand dollars left. So we, which is better for the housing authority, because if Mr. Christopher does it, it comes out of the operating fund, which is limited funds. And Mr. Barry is for capital. So we recommend to the board that we accept the change order. There's also a thirty-five day no-cost extension in this to allow them to get the work done. We recommend that they accept change order number one in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars, twenty-one cents, and the no-cost extension of thirty-five days.
We need a motion and a second, item nine.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve change order number one in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents in a no-cost thirty-five day calendar time, calendar day time extension to the contract with Triumph Roofing Incorporated of Baldwinville, Mass. for the comprehensive roof replacement at Bel Air Heights, Project twenty-four dash two. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item ten, review of financial comparative, Exhibit G in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Patius to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. The financial statements that you have in your board packet reflect the first eight months of financial activity or the activity of the housing authority. The sites are all running on a surplus, with the exception of our state program.
If I could speak to the state program, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Sullivan heard this this morning. Our state program is severely underfunded, underfunded. The majority of the cost overruns are due to vacancies. We turn the units over. Because the buildings are older and they don't have as much capital funds than they have in over the years, when we turn them over, they're much more expensive. I think they average over, just over eight thousand dollars per unit. The state is aware of this. We've notified them, and we will negotiate a supplement to our reserves to cover this. We've asked them several times in the last five, seven years, do they want us to stop tenanting people? And the answer is obviously no. And they do recognize that they underfund us. They recognize that we're well managed also because of the federal programs. Federal programs are fine. We're very solvent. We can handle, you know, things that happen, unexpected events there. So the overall housing authority financial situation is very good. At one, at one time, at some time, if they don't keep up, we might consider giving them the keys. But we won't do that. But it is, it's, there's two different levels, and it's, I think it's funded at about sixty percent of what the feds give us.
Two questions. The is it legal to use federal money to pay for the state?
No, it gets done. We have cash.
Where does the cash come from?
Oh, that's a good question, Michael. So we have a lot of cash that the state has on hand, but it's, we have an account payable, we're signing that. But we have cash. And Mr. Chairman, we probably, if you want, we can sit down with the accountants and go over, because I've done it a hundred times. How, because at home, right, it says on your check register, you don't have the money. You can't write the check, right?
No, because the check maker writes it.
It's not going to, it's not going to cash. We're not in that situation. We have the cash. We will have to reconcile. End of the year, we have to make sure that everybody pays their bills. That's, we're working with the state on that now. But we pay our bills, and if something happens, I mentioned this morning that there's a legal action being taken in the state project. We don't have the money for that, but we're paying, we're, we're.
The other question to you. First page, second page.
Yeah.
Sneaky.
Deficits, yeah.
Kind of sneaky how you do it.
Yeah.
You think you're in a good mood to get to the second page.
I think what I try to do is put it in the order of how the statements are printed, but yeah, the emergency housing culture program is in deficit, but we have to use up that, that reserve, or HUD is going to take that away from us. So, and that's been running on a surplus for the past couple of years.
So that, that purpose also, if we have a choice to spend that out of the Section Eight program or the emergency, if we have that choice, it's better to do it out of the emergency, because the other program is going to be here forever. The emergency housing program came out with COVID and will disappear sometime in the future.
Do people living in the state housing feel like second-class citizens?
Yes.
Or, or do they not even have an awareness of what the story is?
No, so, so we don't treat them that way, but they do, you know, during conversations, we, I'm very, very open with them. We open up the books and say, hey, here's how much money. The Brockton Housing Authority doesn't treat them any differently.
Right. No, I'm sure, but they don't feel it in any way that.
No, in fact, they could transfer it to some of our federal buildings, and many don't want to. Many are very happy where they are.
Good.
It's obedience for forever.
Kevin has got a lot of energy.
We need a motion and a second, item ten.
Don't move.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept the financial comparative for the period ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, approval of twenty twenty actual one destination cost certificate, Exhibit Eight, in your package.
So this is the federal capital fund from two thousand and twenty. When we get these, these monies, and we got awarded three million, six hundred, four thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars, we have twenty-four months to obligate it. That means to have this money under contract, and then another twenty-four months to spend it. We have spent all three million, six hundred and four thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars. And this is the board saying, close this, and the auditors will come in and say, okay, you've met all your deadlines. So it was done well. I'll just answer one question that Tony De Vega, former Commissioner De Vega, used to ask me, how do you do it to a penny? Well, if the last bill comes in, let's say we, we have a hundred dollars left in a grant, and we get a bill for ten thousand, we put a hundred dollars to this grant, and the other nine thousand, nine hundred ninety, that goes to the next grant. So we have spent every dime of this. Michael, they like to get it off the books, too.
You guys waste no time.
Well, they don't want, think about it. Congress is saying we're taking this scarce resource, and we're putting it out. And, well, they don't want, want, think about it. Congress is saying we're taking this scarce resource and we're putting it out there for housing, spend it. If you can't spend it now, we got other priorities we can put it to also. So it's important that we spend it.
So everyone does it that way?
Everybody in the country has the same regulation, but yes, one hundred percent.
Two questions, one. This comes out, what is it, with the president, the twenty-twenty?
So. Yeah, it was a, it's a formula fund that they, they have a, a very complicated formula. And I say that because I don't understand how it all works. And they come out, they say, this is, you have, you got this amount this year based upon how old your units are, uh, based upon, you know, so they, when we replace a roof, they note that and say, okay, Brockton Housing Authority doesn't need that roof for another twenty years. And so the formula comes out based upon how old your properties are, data first, occupancy, number of units.
The second question, if you don't spend every dime, does it go back to, it goes back?
Goes back. If ever goes back, someone will be dead. Because we, right, we, we, we talked about it this morning, you're the residents. We have to make these decisions and everybody wants a new kitchen and bath, right? That, I do. But if your roof's leaking, what good is your kitchen and bath? So we, we have to make those type of decisions. And we have limited funds. Three million, eight hundred, six hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money today's market. So, you know, and it's not buying a lot, not, not when you have two thousand units.
We need a motion in a second, item eleven.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion to, uh, the motion is to approve the twenty-twenty actual modernization cost certificate as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Gary Moon, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Uh, Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item twelve, executive directors report.
Thank you. Um, so I did not give you a written report. As you know, I was on vacation. And the written report that I do is based upon a meeting that I have with all the directors, which I missed. So since that time, I've obviously caught up to what's happening around the authority. We'll provide you with a floral update. Um, uh, number one, we received the keys for the Self-Cult building yesterday.
Wow.
Wow.
Self-Cult is up on, uh, the Brockton Ave online and a beautiful new building. I visited that also. Um, so Vinnie has the keys. He'll be changing the locks and we'll be making sure that we're, we're ready to roll on that. Uh, that's another step towards the, the, where we can follow along. Uh, we did submit our application for finance in September. And across, we probably won't hear to somewhere around January, February. Uh, but, uh, it's a big step, a big step. We will submit a grant to the, um, Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA tomorrow. It's, I think, fourteen million, three hundred thousand, some odd dollars. Uh, that is to, uh, support the Campello, uh, project. Um, today, a lot of staff are down in Fall River doing rent training. The state has changed the regulations, so we have to keep our people up to speed on that. Um, on November fourteenth, we are going to have another resident meeting at Campello. Uh, to, we'll do one at, uh, ten o'clock in the morning for the A building, one o'clock for the B building. Uh, it's to re-engage with the residents to tell them where we are, the progress that we've made. Uh, please feel free to come. Um, we, we met yesterday, uh, with the social service providers and with some residents. Um, uh, this is just to re-engage, to let them know that we're still moving along. We haven't put them out there. And to provide the information of what we've done.
All of those dates in.
Uh, November fourteenth.
I think it's building, uh, ten and then building A at one.
It's B at ten, okay, and, and A at one.
Both, same day.
Both the same day, yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, we, um, we have, we attended, uh, the Commissioner Sullivan and I, uh, along with Commissioner Trask, attended the Charity Guild Gala last week, which was very well-attended. It seemed to raise quite a bit of money, I think. Um, the Charity Guild is very important to the Brockton Housing Authority. They provide a lot of food to our residents. Uh, they're working at Solid Tower, Kennedy Drive, they're working now on a project book, uh, uh, a very exciting project with Cappy Towers. They are going to be providing Christmas gifts for three hundred eighteen, uh, uh, residents over.
Nice, nice.
And I'm talking significant gifts, but.
My belt, huh?
Did you fill out a heart? Did you fill out a heart?
No.
So the way, the way they're. The way this works, it's a, it's, it's actually in conjunction with a business in Eastern called The Beanery. And so these hot, they, they've met with the residents, but it wasn't all the residents. They met with residents, um, back in August, I believe. And they asked them, what would they like? And they gave suggestions. Would you like a microwave oven? Would you like a winter coat? Would you like some bedding? Would you like, uh, a television? So these are significant things. And then over the Beanery, they put a hot up and people take the hots and they have to return it. And I believe it's going to be December sixth, so Monday, that they're going to be, and they'll be distributing all the, the gifts and they'll have meals for everybody that day. Uh, and that's all done by the Charity Guild. So the gala that we went to, we supported, so, 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 so. So I, I took a couple of hots. I mean, it's, you know, it's, each gift is somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars. So this isn't coming in. Um, you know, Christmas cards or a pot holder or, you know, whatever. It's something that's. What?
December ninth?
It's the ninth, December ninth. Thank you.
Okay, now you put it on the calendar. It's a Monday.
Um, so that, that's going on. Um, on a negative thing, I wanted, Commissioner, uh, um, Roberts pointed out that we have some water bill issues. Uh, I know, uh, Michael Patius knows about these. He's been working on. For one, uh, we got the Congress can help, but the, the bills seem to be, um, going to fluie again. So, uh, you know, it does, we don't use any water at Cappy Towers, but we use, uh, uh, twelve times the amount of water at Cappy Towers. I mean, it's Campello. It's just, it's nothing. So we will be working through those. Um. We, we just replaced some meters.
I replaced more meters.
What else can I think?
Because a lot of the meters weren't working. We didn't estimate the length, so I'm going on replacement.
So it might, might be a reconciliation issue, but it, it's, it's, we work a lot because the bills never seem to make sense. And we know what our average is. And, and Commissioner Texera was the one who first started really working on it, but it's goes back a long time before that. And now, uh, Commissioner Roberts is, is noting it also, but we, we are, we, we will work through that. It's a it's a, it's quite a, uh, job to get it done.
Sounds like it, yeah.
And then, um, yesterday, I'll, I'll end on this, uh, was Pumpkin Day. Uh, we, and we, the vibrancy committee, uh, which, uh, Miss Campbell, Mrs. Campbell is a part of it, with a number of other people, have been doing these wonderful things. Uh, they obtained two hundred pumpkins and they brought them to Crescent Court, Golden Circle, and Roosevelt Heights. And then they invited the people from the other places to come. And we'll share some pictures. There were just some, it was a wonderful day. They decorated. Uh, at Roosevelt Heights, there were, uh, older kids, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen who came and they seemed to have a ball. Um, and so it was just a, a very, very nice day to see everybody having a, a, a great time and, and the vibrancy committee is just about that, to bring some vibrancy, you know, um, you know, as I said to Bruno this morning, you know, you work on compliance. How exciting is that? It can be. The other people doing rent recertification, the lease enforcement. And this allows them to be real people and deal with, uh, residents as real people and, uh, they've done a number of things. They did the movie nights, which, you know, we had some licensing issues with, but we'll figure our way through that. Uh, and, uh, they're also now, and they're doing a great job. I'm excited about our holiday party. They've got some great entertainment for that, uh, that we're coming with, so.
That's a great committee. Whoever thought of that committee? You?
With mine, when, actually, I was trying to get the residents to come out of their apartments. So, but, but, uh, other than that, and then I had to argue, what did you call your committee? I, 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 vibrancy was my name. I kept pushing that back on.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, did you run a pumpkin?
We did not, actually. We had some extras. Um, some of the kids actually made some for the senior developments, so they're going to be.
Oh, nice.
Oh.
And, did you feed them too?
Yes, they had chips, we had water and also candy and pork.
Good, good.
But it.
Now. Uh, excuse me, what, what are the plans for the, um, the building that we're getting from, uh, hell, uh, what do you call it? Um.
Self-help?
Yes, self-help, yeah.
They're going to tear it down and we're going to build a hundred forty-four unit, um, elderly, uh, building there, elderly disabled building there.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, remember, we have to, back where the B building is, it's unbuildable. It's in the floodplain. We have to off-run. So you will have two buildings that are on Main Street. They're, they're set back somewhere around twelve or thirteen feet from Main Street, but they'll be up there because that's where your, your high land is.
Yeah.
And we have to do some cut and fill to get the, the third building in. That means, you know, build it up a little bit by about two feet. But we can't build anything back with a B building. That will be a river pop area. That'll be brought.
So that will be a big change up in that neighborhood.
Yes, yeah, I think it will be a very positive change. I really do.
I think so.
There's a resiliency out there. The community room is going to be beautiful. We're looking to put in a commercial kitchen that not only will provide great meals for our residents, but will be, you know, uh, pushed out to the community to, uh, right now, the, uh, people we're talking to are already providing, providing the meals for the, uh, Champion School, what's the school named? The Charter School down on the south side.
New High.
Robert, the Robert, um, Jones.
No, New High, Charter.
Oh, the New Ha, the Charter School. Oh, oh.
Right. So, uh, you know, we, we, there, there's a lot of exciting things that will, we, we're trying to say, not only are we going to redo the Campello place, that it will, we're, we're working with the community to try to make it have a positive, uh, effect on, uh, Brockton Campello South.
Yes.
Did you want to mention something? You have called the landscaper. Everything that's all, all left.
Yeah, well, self-help, well, obviously they knew they weren't going to stay, so they didn't take care of it and it started to look pretty crummy, so we had some landscapers come in. Um, right now, there's some beautiful, uh, shrubs down there and trees. I don't know if we can reuse them somewhere. But we, we would like to tear that building down sooner than later. We will not be using it for any other, uh, we, we need the land.
He can do.
We could, yeah, if we need, we talked about it. We, we will have someone going in. In fact, uh, you know, one of the things is you have a big building and want someone checking up on it. So, uh, we've made plans with Vinnie, but if we, we can use it for something, we will.
Okay. We need a motion in a second, item twelve.
So moved.
Carol Beecher.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept the executive director report for October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yep. Lot of good stuff.
Yep.
We're spreading the wealth.
But lots, well, we have some very, 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 uh, motivated, um, capable employees doing lots of stuff.
Yeah.
Gary Moon, roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item thirteen, old business. Any old business?
I just saw, it's not really old business, but I, they, the Lincoln School that we talked about a few years ago is now already open and, and they're renting out apartments. So that's pretty exciting because that, that should help the neighborhood. That was a pretty tough neighborhood.
We, we do also administer some subsidy for that, uh, building. How, how many do you remember, Tom? For the Lincoln School?
Two, six.
So six of the units are subsidized through, uh, uh, vouchers that come through the Brockton Housing.
Oh, good, good. And the rest is private?
Um, a mix of stock. Uh, we have, uh, money coming from all the places, their lower income, our tax credits that require that we set, uh, their rent set as certain amounts also.
Has anybody been in there?
It's, it's still, I go by it every day. It's, there's still a lot of construction going on.
Oh.
Any other old business? Gary Moon, item fourteen, new business. Any new business? Gary Moon. Item fifteen, adjournment. Need a motion in a second? From anybody?
So moved.
Want to second that, Taylor?
Uh, second. I thought I got it. Thought I won.
No cigar, Taylor, no cigar.
She snuck in. A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to adjourn. Hang on, we've got to do a roll call.
Oops.
Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, meeting adjourned.